Call the meeting to order, please. Please rise for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Begin with a roll call. Just please note that seven of our eight current board members are present. Patty Grimm was to join us virtually. She is not online currently. That is correct?
Correct.
Correct. So we have seven of eight present. Moves us to agenda item number two, public comment. There are two public comments sections now, and at the end of the meeting, the first is reserved just for agenda items that are there to give the board any input for anything we may need to vote on. Is there any public comment in the room? Any public comment online?
No.
Thank you. That moves us to agenda item three, presentations, recognition and rewards. Start with our director of athletics and co-curricular activities, Steve Unspock, who is presenting some athletic academic awards. Steve?
Good evening. I want to thank Dr. Finney and the school board for having us here tonight to recognize our student athletes. We're recognizing our all-academic and citizen athletes through the fall, winter and sports seasons. So our interschoolastic athletic programs here at Pots Grove, our overall athletic philosophy is the continued focus and communication on the term student athlete. Student first and athlete second. Without effort in the academic setting, participation in athletics is not a reality. Pots Grove is a member of the Pioneer Athletic Conference. Every fall, winter and spring athletic season, a student athlete from each sport-specific program is recognized for their outstanding academic achievement in the classroom. We also recognize one student athlete as a citizen award winner each season. Citizen award winners are recognized for their leadership, community service, volunteerism, and overall positive character in the Pots Grove community. Tonight we are recognizing 18 all-academic student athletes and three citizen athletes. Collectively, this group that's sitting behind me have a weighted GPA of 4.09. So out of all 18 students, their weighted GPA is a 4.09, which we are very proud of their efforts. Their effort in the academic setting and athletic arena is top-notch, and we couldn't be more proud. It is like the students, it's like the students we are about to recognize that continue, that continually influence our Pots Grove athletic culture and the term that we talk about daily, student athlete. Thank you, students, for your outstanding dedication to academics and athletics. Before we call our students up, I do want to bring up student school board member, current student school board member, Cecilia Olock, to talk about how she managed success as a student athlete, or success as an athlete, and also in the classroom.
Hello again. It's been a short time since I've seen you all. I feel as though being active in various aspects of the Pots Grove High School community, meaning athletics and academics in this specific scenario, has helped me learn how to balance a rigorous academic schedule while being involved in specifically cheerleading throughout the past two years. You would assume that being busy would make life more difficult, but it has helped me truly embrace what needed to be accomplished and how to stay on task. Although this meant missing out on possible social events, hanging out with friends, or going to family events, I have learned to prioritize what would mean the most to a successful career in the future. Being a student athlete has impacted me so much that I'll be continuing both my rigorous academic career as a pre-med student, as well as a cheerleader at Thomas Jefferson University. I'd like to thank the board for recognizing me and all of my hard work, as well as all that Unspock has done for all the Pots Grove student athletes here. And yeah, so that's all I have to say.
I also want to recognize, we have a lot of parents of our student athletes and our senior athletes, and it's because of their influence, I'm pretty sure, knowing many of them, that their son or daughters are seeing the success both in the athletic arena and the academic setting. So thank you, parents. We appreciate your efforts. As we call our seniors, this is, I think we have all seniors but one here. So this is their hurrah, this is their senior week. I know they are excited. It kicked off with the senior walk today. So this is just one, another thing to add to the resume. So we are going to call all our seniors up. First, Cecilia Olock, fall cheerleading and winter cheerleading. Yeah, you're gonna come right to the middle. Mackenzie Gray, field hockey and softball. Mason Crasely, football and lacrosse. C.C. Hyer, soccer and lacrosse. Lauren Vaughn, tennis and track and field. Carter Berg, golf. George Clair, boys cross-country. Elsa Lucas, girls cross-country. Jack Thompson, boy soccer. Braylon Lewis, volleyball. Julius Marshall, basketball. Ava Lehman, basketball. Jonathan Nyheart, swimming. Sarah Yost, swimming. Jake Palladino, wrestling. Brandon McGinley, baseball. Kaden Kelly, tennis. And Thomas Ziembah, track and field. And our citizen athletes, Delaney Rice, Darian Horton, and also all-academic winner, Johnny Nyheart. Also want to thank Martin Schreiber, our assistant athletic director at the middle school, for supporting us and handing out the certificates.
Congratulations to each of you. Parents, you should be proud. They are not only great athletes, but they're good academic students. You don't need to leave for the rest of the meeting. It's quite exciting. You could choose to stay. We'll see you at graduation.
It's a cool look.
Our next presentation is our junior achievement program at West Pots Grove and Ringing Rocks Elementary. To present is Dr. Chris Stango, the principal of West Pots Grove Elementary, and Mrs. Terry Kohler, interim principal at Ringing Rocks. Chris and Terry.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us. So we have a combined effort of Rocks and West to talk a little bit about our career movement, our career initiatives and junior achievement. We have Mrs. Snyder, our counselor here at West, and Dr. Kylie, who are very involved in the program. So I'll defer to them, unless Mrs. Kohler wants to say her words. Okay?
They're the stars of the show.
Thank you.
All right. Can you hear me okay? All right. Well, we're excited to be here tonight. We're from Ringing Rocks, and I have two first-grade students here tonight. We have Zoe Faust and Colette Lewis. So junior achievement is a national program, and it really focuses on career readiness, entrepreneurship, and financial literacy. So we've been using junior achievement in our guidance curriculum to meet our career and work standards. Tonight we'll really focus on first and second grade, but want to share a little bit about kindergarten, too. In kindergarten, the unit is ourselves. Students learn about decision-making. They also learn about needs versus wants. They start to learn about earning money, saving money, and how to also use those earnings to help others. In first grade, the students learn about, the unit is our families. We learn how each family is unique and special. They also learn about needs versus wants, learn about different jobs. We talk about goods and services and how that connects to needs and wants, and entrepreneurship as well. So the students are really excited to share what they have learned.
One way I help my family is by vacuuming the couches. A job I would like to have when I grow up is a teacher. I also learned how to find places on a map. A business that I ran with my family was a lemonade stand.
Here's a picture of her, Lemonacea. Do you want to tell about the lemonade stand?
So we do a lemonade stand for, to earn mon, to earn money to, for people who have cancer.
One way I help my family is cleaning my bedroom. A job I would like to have when I grow up is an artist. I also learned where to find things on a map, things we want and need on a map. I would like to make and sell art as a business.
Do you want to talk about what you did to help your mom? Want to tell about that?
I help my, I make art for my mom's job, and she works at Good Samaritan.
Thank you. All right, great job, girls.
All right, thank you.
Hello. I'm Jen Snyder. I'm the least exciting person here, because I know they are just so excited to go. We already started. But anyway, we've been focused on our communities in second grade, and the kids have been really excited about the different activities and games that they have played, and they're going to share more about that. We're really focusing on the definition and the different kinds of communities. We're talking about businesses and the workers of businesses, and how the community really needs goods and services that the workers provide in order to get the things that they need and want. We've also talked about voting and the ways to be a responsible citizen. So you're going to hear more from them. We've spent a lot of time on the different careers, the duties and the skills of various careers, and the kids have really enjoyed. So I'm going to hand it over to them. Now, Kaden is going to go first. Go ahead, Kaden. Yep, you go ahead. You go ahead.
Hi, my name is Kaden Gillis. Thank you for having us. I'm learning about a lot of careers and how each job has different skills. People have jobs to earn money, provide things that people want and need, and help the community. My mom is a nurse, and my dad is an electrician at Pico. I went to a building where my dad works for Bring Your Kid to Work Day. It was fun. I got to learn many different things. Being an electrician is awesome, and I want to do it. I like that my mom is a nurse, because if I am hurt, or one of my friends is hurt, she can help us and knows what to do. If there is an electrical problem, my dad can help with electronics, our TV, and fire alarm. My mom makes sure that we are safe and healthy. I love the jobs my parents do.
Testing, testing.
Hello, my name is Ibrahim Artubo. We learned, we, how responsible citizens help the community. One way is to vote. We did an activity about a park that had some issues. There was trash on the ground, not enough benches, and the dogs were on the loose. The community only had enough money to fix one issue. We needed to decide whether to buy trash cans, add more bench, add, add benches, or build a dog park. Our class voted to buy trash cans to keep the park clean. Another day, we played a game to learn what it's like, what it is like to have a job. We were pizza shop workers. We earned a dollar for every pizza we made correctly. My team made nine pizzas.
Hi, my name is Brooklyn Clark. In class, we did an activity based on the job roles and the concept of goods and services. I got a job card for a zoologist who is responsible for studying and caring for animals. I had $10 to spend on what I wanted for my animals. I bought food for $5. I also needed a stethoscope, but I didn't have enough money. I will save my money. Another classmate was a medic. He needed a mask and bandages for $4. He had $6 left to put in the bank. Another classmate had enough money to pay for everything he needed. He had enough money saved to buy something he really wanted. He bought a video game controller. We want to thank you for being on the school board. You make our community a better place. We want to give, we want to give you all pizzas for all the important work you do.
The pizza house! The pizzas are on the house! Free pizzas, everybody! Free pizzas!
Thank you very much. Students, thank you, and congratulations. It can be scary for some people to talk in a large room on microphones. You guys seem to have a lot of fun with it. Parents, you should be proud of them. Can we get one group picture? Wendy and Jen, thank you for the work you're doing. I don't know if you know it, parents, but we believe we have one of the finest guidance departments of any of the neighboring school districts, and Wendy and Jen are a big part of that. We appreciate what you're doing. Thank you. Again, thank you, students and parents and guidance counselors. Third and final presentation of the night is a presentation on the Pots Grove Recreation Board. Mr. Martin Schreiber, who's our middle school athletic director and also assistant athletic trainer, is doing this presentation. Martin?
Hey, thank you. The Pots Grove Rec would like to thank the school district for continued support of their programs. Just to give you an update on some numbers, we had 43 people signed up for swim lessons, 22 people at basketball, 14 for volleyball, 16 for line dancing, and walking club is just starting up again. Some issues we had was the community band, I guess, stored their equipment down someplace on High Street, and the building was no longer, they're not allowed to store their stuff there. So they'll take it out this summer and use it. And Lower Pots Grove, I think, stepped up to let us borrow some of their space, so that their stuff will be in there. The big culmination of everything for Pots Grove Rec is usually summer playground. This year so far, there's 144 students, children, signed up for that. And I was just notified that, I guess, we're doing a big paving project, which is going to throw a wrench in some of the parking and some of the use of the facilities that I'm hoping we could work out somehow. That's really the basis of it. If you guys need any more information, feel free to reach out, and just wanted to, you know, bring the information to you guys so that you get it firsthand. So, any questions? Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Martin. Agenda item five, receiving of accounts, 5.4. I skipped over you, didn't I?
You did.
We're going to back up and do one of the most important things. Agenda item four, report from Dr. David Finney, our superintendent.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick ones. Biggest, biggest news on my mind, and I think I'm not the only one, is graduation. We're looking forward to celebrating the class of 2025 on Friday, May 30th, at 7:00 p.m., and we are hoping for dry weather. We also have our board rep posting, "We're seeking to fill the board seat left open by the passing of Dr. Nippard." Please see our website for additional information. And then two late-arriving announcements that I want to share as well involving our middle school. So first, "No Place for Hate." During the 24-25 school year, the Pots Grove Middle School has re-engaged the mission of being recognized as a "no place for hate" school. As this mission was presented to the students during grade-level meetings, members of the student government came forward and expressed interest in leading this initiative. Here, the students developed and ran activities dedicated to addressing rumors and gossip, understanding that there is more to an individual than what could be seen, and setting individual goals in recognition of personal strengths. With their efforts, we're honored to report that the middle school has again achieved the designation as a "no place for hate" school. Another designation, PBIS Tier One designation. After a few years of consistent implementation, the middle school reached fidelity in Tier One PBIS using the tiered fidelity inventory. Fidelity means that we can expect positive outcomes from PBIS based upon the systems, data, and practices we have in place. The middle school has entered in the state-level system to be recognized as Tier One. We will receive official confirmation by the Pennsylvania Positive Behavioral Sport Network in early fall 2025 with further directions on how we will be celebrated at the Network Implementers Forum. So congratulations to our middle school team for both of those important designations. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Dr. Finney. 5.1, receiving of accounts for audit.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 5.1, receiving accounts, of accounts for audit, for the high school student activities, middle school student activities, and cafeteria accounts for April 2025 as presented.
Motion in a second to approve the accounts for audit. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. 6.1, treasurer's report.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 6.1, the treasurer's report for April 2025 as presented, and file it for audit.
Motion in a second to approve the treasurer's report. Any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. Agenda item 7.1, professional staff resignations.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 7.1 through 7.2.
Motion in a second to approve 7.1, professional staff resignations, and 7.2, support staff appointments. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. 7.3, support staff retirements.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 7.3 through 7.5.
Motion in a second to approve 7.3, support staff retirement, 7.4, extended school year with additional staff, and 7.5, the summer apex credit recovery staff appointments. Any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? The motions pass. Agenda item 8, 8.1, student in leave, excuse me, student in lieu of FAPE settlement agreement.
I'd like to make, like to make a motion that we approve 7, 8.1.
Motion in a second to approve 8.1, student in lieu of FAPE settlement agreement. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. 8.2, lease agreement with Montgomery County Intermediate Unit.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 8.2, the lease agreement with the MCIU.
Motion in a second to approve the lease agreement with the MCIU. Any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. 8.3, point the solicitor from Fox Rothschild LLC.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 7.3, pointing the solicitor.
Motion in a second to approve 8.3, Fox Rothschild LLC as our solicitor. Any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? The motion passes. 8.4, budget transfers.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 8.4, budget transfers, maybe with a bit of an explanation for the public on that one.
Motion in a second with an explanation.
The budget transfers are necessary for the changes in spending plans throughout the year. Unfortunately, there was budget transfers that occurred well in the beginning of the fiscal year, which the report was never presented to the board until now.
Any questions or discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? The motion passes. 8.5, volunteer emergency service provider rebate program.
I would like to make a motion to approve 8.5 through 8.7.
Motion in a second to approve 8.5 through 8.7. Motion in a second to approve 8.5 through 8.7. This is the Volunteer Emergency Service Provider Rebate Program, the Intergovernmental Agreement for a Shared Student with the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit, and the Deaf Hearing Communication Center for a Contract for a Sign Language Interpretation at our senior graduation ceremony. Any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? The motions pass. 8.8, Assessment Appeal.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 8.8 with an explanation.
Motion in a second to approve 8.8 with an explanation.
Thank you. This is a property located off of Medical Drive. The taxpayer has appealed their assessment to have it lowered. Our appraiser has assigned a value to that property, and we agreed to about the same values our appraiser has come to for that property.
How much lower is that?
This one would be about a $3,500 reduction in tax revenue. Then, that's not the big one. Oh, wow.
So we have a motion in a second on 8.8 with this explanation from Ron. Any other discussion or questions? Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. 8.9, Another Assessment Appeal.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 8.9, the assessment appeal, number two.
Motion in a second to approve 8.9, Assessment Appeal. Any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. 8.10, An Assessment Appeal.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 8.10 with an explanation on this one because this is a large one.
Motion in a second to approve 8.10, Assessment Appeal. Ron, an explanation?
Yes, the Target Shopping Center has applied for an assessment appeal back in 2023. Working with our appraiser and their appraiser, we've come to a value about, market value for that property, about $15,500,000, which equates to about a $90,000 loss in tax revenue.
Any other questions or discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. Agenda item nine, Action Item Education, 9.1, Approval of Our Comprehensive Plan.
I would like to make a motion that we approve 9.1 through 9.3.
Motion in a second to approve 9.1, Our Comprehensive Plan, 9.2, The Extended School Year Contract with Camp Hill Special School, and 9.3, The 25-26 School Year Contract with the Devro Foundation. Any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? The motions pass. 9.4, Conference Attendance for Two Staff Members at the Orton Gillingham Plus Program.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 9.4, Conference Attendance.
Motion in a second to approve 9.4, Conference Attendance. Any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? The motion passes. 9.5, An Overnight Trip with the Technology Student Association for Estimated for Three Students.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 9.5, the overnight trip.
Motion in a second to approve 9.5, The Overnight Trip for the Technology Student Association. Any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? The motion passes. 9.6, An Overnight Trip for the Distributive Education Clubs of America Competition.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 9.6 and 9.7, both the DECA State Competition and the Overnight DECA International Career Development Conference.
Motion in a second to approve two overnight trips, the DECA State Competition and the DECA International Career Development Conference. Any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. 9.8, An Overnight Trip for the Music Department.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 9.8 with an explanation, please.
Motion in a second to approve the overnight trip for the music department with an explanation from Dr. Finney.
So 9.8 is a trip that the music department is planning. It's a cruise of the Festivals of the Sea. It is for the high school musical group, so it would be the chorus, the orchestra, and the band. It's expected that 70 students would participate in the trip. The trip would go from April 10th through April 17th, and the cost to the students would be approximately $1,300, which includes transportation, lodging, and entrance fee. This is a little different than previous trips because this is a cruise. The cruise, the reason for the music trips are to provide an opportunity to enrich musical education as well as recruit and retain members in our growing music program.
Thank you, Dr. Finney. Any other questions or discussion? Motion in a second to approve 9.8, Overnight Trip for the Music Department. Those in favor? Those opposed? The motion passes. 9.9, An Overnight Trip for Tours Italy.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 9.9, the overnight trip to Italy.
Motion in a second to approve 9.9, the overnight trip to Italy. Any questions or discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? The motion passes. 9.10, An Overnight Trip for the Track and Field Invitational to Randall's Island, New York.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 9.10, the Track and Field Invitational Trip.
Motion in a second to approve 9.10, Track and Field Invitational Trip. Any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. 9.11, Overnight Trip to Germany, Belgium, and Austria.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 9.11, the trip to Germany, Belgium, and Austria, and just, if they need any chaperones, I'd be more than happy.
Is that a second for Ashley? Is a chaperone over there? So we have 9.11, Overnight Trip to Germany, Belgium, and Austria. Motion in a second. Any discussion or questions? Those in favor? Those opposed? The motion passes. Agenda 10, Policies, 10.1, Approval of Two Policies, 236.1, Threat Assessment, and 828, Fraud.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 10.1, the two policies.
Motion in a second to approve these two policies, 236.1 and 828. Any discussions? Any questions? Those in favor? Those opposed? The motion passes. Agenda item 11, Montgomery County Intermediate Unit Board Update, Anique Ruiz Brown.
Good evening, everyone. So you all received the email I sent with the update. So I'll just go over some brief things, some summaries. The meeting started out with a presentation on the Office of Innovation and Strategic Partnership and the Office of Organizational and Professional Learning. So they did a presentation on data-informed communication strategies designed to deliver meaningful content and purposeful storytelling that clearly reflects and supports MCIU's mission, vision, and core values. There were some student recognition. Four hearing-impaired students were recognized for earning second place in a national math competition. We had two MCIU teachers, I went down too fast, traveling to China for two weeks as part of an international teaching opportunity. They wanted to, MCIU wanted to let us know that professional development for educators, there are numerous trainings available, PBIS, AI, literacy strategies, inclusion in special education practices, environmental education experiences, and more. Early childhood and special education, so Head Start and Pre-K Counts advocacy. The MCIU leadership is actively working with state and national partners to protect funding for early education programs such as Head Start and Pre-K Counts. And I'll have more information on the next meeting because the meeting we just had the other day has some really great info from them. Also, IDEA sub-grants, funding for special education through IDEA B611 and 619 was approved for several districts, including Pots Grove, Upper Dublin, Upper Marion, and West Hickin. We have some mental health, inclusion, and student well-being trainings and programs. There's suicide prevention training, the MCIU approved funding for a program called SOS, Signs of Suicide. There is provider training program and support for mental health awareness and suicide prevention, mental health and evaluation services. So we have some service agreements that were approved for licensed mental health professionals, psychological evaluations, multidisciplinary evaluations, and these services will be available to multiple schools in Montgomery County. There is also a new consultant agreement, support for students with unique needs. They were approved to support students who are deaf-blind and provide inclusive education programming. For support staff and school staff, let's see, we already said, professional development For educators, I already said that, sorry, legislative proposals. We have living wage for support staff. So Pennsylvania House Bill 777 proposes a minimum and living wage for education support professionals. That's kind of cool. Next, we have some school safety and education policy. They talked about proposed legislation, and I don't know if we'll also hear this from me when you do your updates because our legislative information kind of crosses over. But Senate Bill 462, which will allocate $50 million to improve the safety and protection of school corridors, cyber charter oversight. There were several bills introduced, HB, well, I won't read all the numbers, but has to do with certification, fund balance limits, and property ownership restrictions. Next meeting was May 21st, and we adjourned at 8:57 p.m.
Thank you very much, Anique. Any questions of Anique? Thank you. Moves us to Agenda Item 12, Committee Items. First is 12.1, Approval of the Policy Committee Meeting of April 22nd, 2025.
Trying to work here, too. I would like to make a motion to approve the Policy Committee Meeting minutes, 12.1.
Motion in a second to approve the Policy Committee Meeting minutes of April 22nd, 2025. Any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. 12.2, Our Operations Finance Committee Meeting of May 13, a report from Lewis Coraminus. Lewis?
Good evening. First time doing this, so bear with me here. So the Operations Finance Committee met on Tuesday, May 13th, at 6:00 p.m. Here at the high school, we had seven board members present, Jay, Tanya, Anique, Bill, Jim, Patty, and myself, virtually. On the school administration side, Dr. Finney, Mr. Linky, Mr. Blank and Biller, we're all in presence as well. On the finance side, we discussed the Volunteer Emergency Service Provider Rebate Program, which was actually voted on tonight, Agenda Item 8.5. So Mr. Linky told us about similar programs, you know, in the region and other districts that were doing this, and the whole purpose is an effort to create an incentive to have more volunteer emergency services personnel in and around the community. On the operations side, Mr. Blank and Biller gave us an update on multiple projects. The paving and tennis courts projects are both currently out to bid. Bids will be due back next week. Recommendations should be made later, late towards the end of next week, and then that would be voted on at the June 10th board meeting. The tennis courts will not be available for the fall season, so Mr. Anzbach is working on arrangements for how to address the fall tennis season. And then there is an upcoming meeting tomorrow for the stadium and track project, just some planning and site walkthrough items. The meeting was adjourned at 6:26 p.m.
Thank you, Lewis. Any questions of Lewis? That moves us to new business, 13.1. Lewis, let's continue with you. Any new business?
No new business.
Jim? Ashley?
If Evan Brant is watching, I've got my Yeti, Evan. He'll know what I'm talking about.
Thank you, Ashley. Jay? My wife and I attended, and my grandson, attended the Athletic Awards Ceremony. I think it was last week that I think Steve Anzbach organized. Shout out to Steve, but also equally to all of the coaches who presented there. Just gave me a great sense of the depth and the range of coaches we have here with our student athletes, and a shout out to the parents, and most impressive, the Booster Club, who does a lot of work for these sports teams and puts a lot together. Reminded me a lot of the music things I've attended. We are this small but mighty district, and we have a lot of student athletes that we should be quite proud of for the size of the district. Steve, coaches, parents, Booster Club, if you're listening, just a really fine job in organizing that awards presentation, and a shout out to all of our students and the awards that they received. It was just really well done. Dr. Finney?
Nothing for me. Just continue to look at the weather for Friday.
Moving to Vice President, Bill. Well, you're there, if you think about it. Anique?
I just wanted to say that the middle school marching band did a great job at the Memorial Day Parade, and yeah, they were awesome. I even had, a guy came up to me and said, you know, "Do you have a student there?" And I was like, "Oh, yeah, that's my son." They always do such a great job. And he said how great our students were playing and how their formation, I don't know, he was using marching lingo, I don't know what he was saying. But he was very impressed and said that our kiddos did really good.
Thank you, Anique. Tanya?
Thank you. I mentioned all these people for the athletic thing. I forgot to mention Jack and the training team, and Martin is here in doing that. Jack doesn't like shout-outs, which is the main reason I'm doing it, if he's listening in terms of that. But what was interesting is the training team there was almost mentioned by every one of the athletic teams that were there. They touch every athlete or involved in the conditioning and the recovery of anyone that has injuries or needs help, but just a fine athletic training team. And I think Martin is still here, or was here in some of the areas in the back. He's very much a part of that, is one of our assistant trainers. So Martin, well done. Job. Dr. Finney, did I say you?
He said me.
I got you. Ron, anything? I don't usually include you, I'm asking you. All right, that moves us to adjournment. Oh, public comment, thank you. That's the second mistake I made tonight, which is less than usual, I think, hopefully. Is there any public comment? This can be on any agenda item from the evening or anything in general. We have two. You want to decide between the two of you, just rocks, paper, scissors, who goes first? White or maroon? It's like school colors. The maroon is going first. If you would come up, we asked, keep about two minutes, your name and the township that you are from, and then your comment, please.
I'm Laura McCorkle, Lower Pots Grove.
I'm Laura McCorkle, Lower Pots Grove. I'm here to express deep concern about the extreme behaviors in our schools and the impact that they are having. Students and teachers are being slapped, punched, and kicked. Desks and chairs are being thrown, profanity ringing throughout the halls, students running from and around their classrooms and jumping on furniture, just in the last several weeks at Lower and Ringing Rocks. Instead of developing a love of learning, our youngest students are becoming fearful and traumatized on a daily basis. The place they should feel the safest has become unpredictable and unsafe for them. Teachers are now in survival mode, constantly trying to deescalate dangerous situations, and the needs of all students are going unmet. Without consequences, these behaviors escalate, and the students, all students, are suffering. They are scared to come to school in the morning and anxious during the day. When we ask our children how their day was, they do not tell us anything positive. They're telling us who got hit, what was thrown, or how many times they had to evacuate their classroom to stay safe that day. Schools get, I'm sorry, schools get the behaviors that they allow. If this physical aggression and inappropriate language are tolerated, these behaviors will continue and grow. There must be consequences. Physical aggression must have zero tolerance in our schools, requiring immediate contact and suspension. Though P B I S is extremely helpful and a wonderful foundation, it is not enough for our children. I respectfully urge the board and district to consider some of the following solutions. First, we need clear, appropriate, and consistent consequences for every student. We must ensure safety for all students. May I continue? Sorry. I just, I have said it for two minutes, but go ahead. It's okay? Yeah. I appreciate you letting me finish. Thank you very much. We need to ensure the safety for all in our buildings by holding students accountable for their actions and delivering appropriate consequences every time. When students are not held accountable, they learn that these behaviors are tolerated and everyone suffers. We also need comprehensive behavior planning. I understand it is very difficult when there are students with special needs and I E Ps. Functional behavior assessments and strong evidence-based intervention plans must be developed and followed by every staff member that has been appropriately trained to deal with these most difficult students. All students need to be held accountable, regardless of their needs. I know this is difficult, but we also need increased staffing in every building with more trained behavioral staff and emotional support teachers. When ste- students and teachers go home crying because of what they are experiencing at Ringing Rocks Elementary, our most youngest students in this district, something is terribly wrong. Our students deserve better, and it's time for our district to act, and immediately, before it's too late for all of our children. I thank you very much for your time and consideration, and thank you for allowing me to continue. Thank you.
Laura, correct?
Yes.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, I, I mean, speaking for the board, I can feel the concern, the sincerity. Um, because we're a group of seven, there, there's usually not response that, that we give, but I want to thank you for your comments and let you know that they are noted by the board and by the superintendent. All right, thank you.
I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Hello. And the same, if you would give your name, your township, and, uh, about two mi- limit to two minutes if you could. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name's Christina Fisher. I live in Upper Pots Grove. I am a parent of three students in the district, a senior, a fourth grader at Lower, and a kindergartner at Ringing Rocks, and I'm also concerned with extreme behaviors occurring on a frequent basis, especially in the elementary schools. My children have been exposed to inappropriate language and aggressive and unsafe behaviors on a daily basis as well. When aggressive behavior happens repeatedly and teachers are powerless to do anything to prevent it from happening again, this is an indication that the school is falling short of its basic responsibility, which is to keep the students safe. Classroom safety should always be the number one priority. Children deserve to feel like school is a safe place to go every day, especially our youngest students at Ringing Rocks and West. Witnessing recurring behavior outbursts that force the class to evacuate into the hallway is a scary thing for our youngest students, and it is occurring frequently. I understand that there are supports in place, but it does not seem like there's enough help, and there is not enough follow-through after an event occurs. P B I S is a great program, and I'm happy our district uses it, but it is also valuable to teach children that poor decisions and actions have consequences, because without that piece of the puzzle, there's no way to prevent inappropriate and aggressive behavior from spiraling out of control. Sadly, I believe this is where our schools currently are. My hope is that the school board will look into a different protocol for handling events of recurring aggression, bullying, or any other behavior that's inappropriate for school, including thorough, um, follow-through, and some way to show our students that the school is in control of maintaining a safe environment for them. We can do better to create an environment that is more conducive to learning. Thank you.
Again, thank you for your sincerity and for your comments.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. We appreciate it.
Oh, yeah, okay. I know, um, Ms. McCorkle and, and I are scheduled to meet tomorrow. Uh, if you have a second, uh, after the meeting, I'd love to talk with you as well. Thank you.
Is there any other comment in the room? Is there any comment online? No, Jeff? Thank you. Then we move for a motion to adjourn? Meeting is adjourned.